So, welcome to our joint meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District Committee and boards from our respective communities. If you, I'd like to officially call the meeting to order and ask everybody to rise. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, our purpose here this evening is to review the proposed school committee budget for FY21. So, I'm going to just, oh, let's, introductions, we've done them before, but I'm Jane Reggio from the Millville Member of the School Committee.
Erin Pinaco, Millville Rep.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone Rep., of the School Committee.
Jim Watson, Blackstone Finance Committee and Capital Actway Committee.
Erica Blake, Board of Selectmen, Millville.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator, Millville.
Margot Beek, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Gary Gill, Millville Finance Committee.
Ken Tubman, Millville Finance Committee.
Matt Aronworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone School Committee.
Karen Vernon, Millville School Committee.
Tara Larkin, Millville School Committee.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Jack is dealing with his car. Okay, that's likely head. All right, so I will now officially turn it over to Dr. DeFalco and Mr. Aronworth.
Great, thanks Jane. Good evening, everybody. Really nice to see everyone back together and we're pleased this evening to have, I think at this point, as clear and fine pointed a number as we could get to throughout our FY21 budget process. And so, we're pleased this evening to be able to meet with leadership from both communities and share with you kind of what we consider a little bit of a sneak peek because our public hearing is tomorrow night, but we always think it's important to make sure we operate with no surprises as we did last year and to kind of do a preview, if you will, with the town leadership before we go to a formal public hearing with the community at large. And so, we really appreciate your time this evening. I know it was a late night for some last night as we're seeing you two nights in a row, which is, which is nice, but I'm sure everyone's had a long day with that, but still very happy you're here. And so, this, this evening, we're going to walk through a overview of, an overview of our FY21 budget. You do have a PowerPoint in front of you, but for folks who will watch at home, we have it up on the screen as well. And as we always do, we open with our district improvement strategy and our purpose for our work because all of our fiscal work that we have done is directly anchored back to our focus on teaching and learning and improving outcomes for all kids. And so, the work of our district has really solidified over the past couple of years and we are doing very specific and targeted work, which we'll talk a little bit about tonight, on the what, the how, which is our curriculum and instruction, the whole child, which is looking at those non-academic needs that sometimes get in the way of learning, and the community, which is about bringing the two towns together around supporting the needs and outcomes of our, of all of our, of our students. Our internal purpose, we know that every organization, it just does better when folks are moving in the same direction and have a common sense of where they're trying to go. And that's how our purpose was actually created. And it's really simple and it's to create happy, healthy, proficient kids ready for college, career, and community. Bottom line, we want our kids to be very well adjusted, at minimum at grade level, ready for whatever it is they want to take on and being able to successfully function in a, in a variety and multitude of different groups. And so, that's what we're striving to do in the classroom every day, but also with our fiscal plan. We have to make sure that we're putting our dollars where we need them to make sure that our strategy can be implemented with fidelity and that we are continuing to work towards our purpose. And so, we'll talk a little bit about that this evening. I know one of the things that's really important we'll talk about as we move toward the end of our presentation is return on investment and that idea of ROI. It is not lost on us either, so we can talk a little bit as we move toward the end of our discussion, just what we've been able to do with the resources that we have been very blessed to receive from our communities and how we've been able to put those resources into the classrooms and help move the students toward the goals that we've set in our purpose and in our strategy. So, just wanted to forecast that a little bit. But we'll just start as we typically do, just discussing the process today. This is not something I think that our communities know at this point that Matt and I sit in his office and do over the span of a couple of hours. This process actually starts, although maybe he want to do it that way, Matt, at some point. This process starts back in late October, early November, and it's hard to believe we're at March 11th, this is crazy, but, and we start with partnering with the school committee to lay out the timeline and making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row with the process that we're going to follow. Matt and I meet with district leadership, we meet with what we call cost center managers as listed here, our building principals, athletics, music, et cetera. And we talked a lot about what is this idea or concept of Phase Two? If you remember, last year, we talked about looking at our budget in phases. And this year was Phase One of our budget and Phase One of our improvement work in our blueprint. And again, we are very grateful to our two communities for helping us implement, you know, more so heavy on the front end in year one or Phase One of this work to be able to do some good things this school year. And so, we started the conversation with this concept of Phase Two. Here's what we said we thought we were going to need last spring, looking forward. Then, all of our cost center managers actually worked within their departments, looking at their school improvement plans, which the school committee can share if you haven't seen them, are significantly different than what we've had in the past, that are all connected back to the district blueprint. So, all of our five plans, each of the four schools in our district blueprint, are very much tethered together and they're all driven by the district plan with very school-specific goals within that. So, the cost center managers worked to create those budgets based on, here's what we said we want to do, here's how we want to use the money that we need to do what we said we want to do, moving forward. Then, Matt and I had an opportunity to meet one-on-one with every one of those cost center managers and go line by line through each budget. And we, you know, we kind of came up with a silly term for it, but we talk about staff and stuff. So, what's the staff you need, what's the stuff you need, to really just kind of boil it down to the basics. So, we were able to look very closely at what they currently have in place for staffing and for resources and then where we need to go next with that. We then met with the school committee and each of the cost center managers in budget workshops. So, it gave the school committee the opportunity to not hear from Matt and I, which I think is really important, and hear right from the folks that build the budgets for each of the schools and each of the departments and say, here's what we need. And we had a lot of conversation and dialogue throughout that process. We also had a chance to meet with the towns and to go through some very, very early preliminary numbers and get some feedback and make adjustments to the budget through that feedback.
So, to echo what Dr. DeFalco said, this was certainly not he and I sitting in an office for a few hours. You can see before you all of the various meetings that we had and the dates that they were held. I think the important thing to note, as Dr. DeFalco brushed upon, is all of these budget workshop meetings, so for five weeks, we heard from various cost center managers. And the purpose of that is to really give the school committee and the public an understanding of what is in each piece of the budget and what the most important pieces are. So, as we continue with the work of seeing where we can sharpen our pencils, we take into consideration the importance of the different things that people have put into their budget. And these budget workshops are their opportunity to explain why specific components of their budget are as important as they are. And it's almost like they're advocating for everything that they need and then we have to figure out, based on the priorities that they've listed, what we can possibly move around or whittle down a bit. So, there were three major factors that impacted our budget this year and it was funding. There were, there were changes in funding. As you can see, I'll discuss it a little further, the specifics for each, but the three were a rise in minimum local contributions, which were significant and we'll discuss. We received minimum Chapter 70 increases based on the fact that we're in hold harmless. We will see nothing more than minimal aid, which will be $30 per student. And we will also, there was a decrease in the charter school reimbursement.
Yeah, I just want to address that because I know last night at the Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting, we heard a bit about Blackstone being on the winning side of the Student Opportunity Act. In fact, it's really unfortunate, but we're, but we were, and I want to explain that very clearly. Had the charter reimbursements been fully funded, right, so theoretically, the way that the Student Opportunity Act was written, that would have been great. However, the bulk of our students, actually all except for one, I believe, within the past two years, are going to be in the 60% reimbursement bucket. So, the way the department is reimbursing for charter school students, it's either 100% their first year, 60% their second year, and 40% their third year. The majority of our kids, I believe 29, are in their first year this year. So, next year, we would get 60% reimbursement if that reimbursement was funded, was funded 100% of the 60%. The state is funding the 60% at 25%. So, we are actually unfortunately, when you, the Department of Ed has put out a list of charter reimbursements, we are right near the bottom. I think there might be two or three below us in terms of the lowest reimbursement. So, we are getting 25% of the kids that would qualify for 60% reimbursement. When Matt looks at the numbers and walks us through, you will see that our anticipated, initial anticipated charter reimbursement has gone down significantly. We'll actually look at the real number. So, we're looking at about 110,000 reimbursement. When we were, we initially thought would be around two and a quarter. And so, you know, if, if the reimbursements were 100% funded, that would be great, but they're not. And I certainly didn't want to correct that last evening, but I, I want to make sure that folks understand because as we have, I've said a few times at our school committee meetings, I would consider BMR and the losing end of that deal, very much so.
So, as you can see, the first page shows, well, not the first page, but the first chart, shows the minimum local contribution. So, here are the numbers associated with each of the three major factors. As you can see, the minimum local contribution from Blackstone went from 6,596 to 6,919. That's a 4.91% increase from last year. Millville's went from about 2.178 to 2.288, which is actually a 5.06% increase over last year. And as you can see, over the last five years, it just keeps increasing.
And this is what the state is saying, the towns have to pay first. Before we do anything, this is coming right out of what you need to do before anything's done.
Yep. Quick question. How do they justify these four or five percent increases in the world of Proposition Two and a Half? Is it that the wealth factor of the town? I mean, I'm looking for the easy. There are a number of groups that are asking that same question and trying.
Our very question we ask every time we have an opportunity.
Yeah.
We haven't got that answer, unfortunately.
It's not that the wealth factors, if you will, are changing in this community compared to other communities in the state.
Our free reduced lunch numbers in, in the past 10 years have gone for 15% in our school district. So, 2010, 15% of kids qualified for free reduced lunch. We are now just a hair under 38% of kids are qualifying for free reduced lunch. So, when you look at that increase, our poverty rate has increased over the past decade.
So, the other factor we mentioned is the Chapter 70. And as you can see, not as steep of a pattern as the minimum local contribution. It really has gone nowhere. As we're in hold harmless, which means because of declining enrollment from when we first started receiving Chapter 70 funds, because of declining enrollment and some changes in the demographics, we, they're saying we're already being paid each year more than we should be paid. And so, each year, they, in the statute, they said, we'll never reduce the reimbursement or the, the Chapter 70 money, we'll always give more, but we get only the minimum, which is $30 per kid. So, every year that we've been moving forward recently, we're at hold harmless and we basically see whatever the minimum additional money is per child.
One question on the minimum local contribution. Why is Millville's increasing at a faster rate than Blackstone?
That would be because of the formula that the state used to calculate it.
It's solely based upon the number of students?
No. No, this is what the state determines each town is able to pay. I can get a copy of what the formula is, how they factor it. There's a number of different factors that go into it. Some of it is the estimated increase in income for the, for the towns and property value, but these numbers are not about the percentage of students or what the district is assessing. These numbers are what the state says that Millville and Blackstone should pay. So, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, the charter school reimbursement is one of the places where we got hit with respect to this Student Opportunity Act. We conservatively budgeted for 200-some-odd thousand dollars initially.
250, I think, yeah.
250? It's on, it's on the actual summary sheet.
Oh, 241, yeah, it was right around there.
Yep, 241, 592. That was conservative. If you look at DESI's charts, if we qualified for all of our state funding this year, we would be receiving 316,577. And instead, because of the factor that Dr. DeFalco mentioned, we're only receiving a small portion of that. So, to clarify a little more, for those that are not familiar with the charter reimbursement, as, as Dr. DeFalco said, it's 100% the first year, 60% the second year, and 40% the third year. However, with the introduction of the Student Opportunity Act, the state has decided, here's a perfect chance to reset the bar and now phase this in again. So, they've now started phasing in the 160, 40. And they have one pot of money and the determination was made, they're going to fully fund all of the 100% reimbursements first. And then, whatever is left, they're gonna then fund to the 60 and then fund to the 40%.
That's how we ended up with 25% and the 60%.
And people that are in 40%, they're getting nothing.
Yep.
They're not funding any of the 40% reimbursements and we're lucky. So, this number, again, back to some of the questions where, how come these numbers changed so dramatically from when the budget gets certified to when the actual numbers come out? The pot of money that they may allocate towards charter reimbursement may grow a little bit. So, if that grows and they pay off all of the 100,000, we may see a bit more in the, the reimbursement that we're getting for the 60%. I'm not anticipating that that would be anything significant.
So, so to, last evening, again, at the, I don't mean to keep bringing it up, but I just want to make sure I'm being really clear. I think all, I think the intention was very good and positive. And the notion, if you remember, was over the four years, the district could see over a million dollars in additional charter reimbursement. That's going off of the assumption that we are getting the full state aid. And we're not getting the full state aid, we're getting, you know, we're getting a very small fraction of that. So, I just want to clear that up. And everyone around this table knows, the challenge is, and some folks at home might be wondering, well, you don't have the students anymore, what do you need the, what do you need the resources for? Well, because they're not just taking one class of kids from one school and we can shut that classroom down. They're taking two kids from here, three kids from there, four kids from there. So, there's no overhead we can really reduce in terms of staff or in terms of any operational costs. So, and the state acknowledges that, hence the reason they have this reimbursement process.
Can I ask a question about that? But from your budget in 2020 to actual 2020, I, why did it grow so much if, if the reimbursement rate's 100%? I understand charter school opened up and there were students, but if we're getting reimbursed 100% the first year, why is that primarily?
That was the initial assessment?
That was our initial assessment and what happened was, we had 20-some-odd extra students sign up for the, for the charter school.
So, that was a reflection?
So, originally, we had a small package and you'll actually see the next, on the next slide, the change in sending tuition, which will reflect why there was such a tremendous jump in reimbursement for this year. So, if you look, the other, shall I say slight kick to the teeth, is in addition to not receiving the reimbursement.
That makes sense.
We're paying significantly more in tuition for the charter schools. And as you can see, FY18, there was not a lot. FY19, a couple of more kids went. And then, in FY20, there is a tremendous jump in the number of students and a tremendous amount that we had to pay. I will also say that from FY20 to FY21, we didn't increase a ton of students, but the actual cost to send the kids did go up as well. So, it was, it was a double-edged sword for us, where we're not getting the reimbursement and we're seeing more money going out. And that comes directly out of our Chapter 70 funds.
Are, are, is charter school acceptance what, or done? So, do we know the number that are actually going next year? No?
Not 100%. They're only projecting, I think, an increase of one student. And that's how they delayed it out on.
So, charter school lotteries just happened this past week.
Right.
And then, once they go through their lottery process, they'll see which students accept their offers and then based on that, they'll start going through a waitlist. And if we have students that are on a waitlist, they, they're.
Change?
Yep, they could increase.
Are there any other charter schools opening in the region? I thought I heard that's how it was.
There was a proposal that the commissioner, and it was in Milford.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
That was a regional for Blackstone Valley, that the commissioner did not approve the advancement of that.
Okay.
How many charter schools are in our area that children are going to for my district?
Just one.
One.
So, next year, if the big bucket of students moves to the 40% reimbursement and that's not funded?
We will get probably nothing.
Next to nothing. And then, that next year, we will certainly get nothing if we don't have any new students up, which we don't want.
We're scheduled to get nothing for the fourth year.
Right. So, we have to, we have to, as we're, we're already forecasting FY22, that's something that we're already thinking about.
And the cost is going up per student because the overall cost in the district per student is going up, right? Because that's what you.
Correct. Correct. So, as opposed to school choice, school choice is a set number where it's 5,000 out, 5,000 in. Charter school is based on the per pupil expenditure of the district. So, as much as we would spend on a student in this district, we have to give that amount of money to the charter school.
If, excuse me, if you have a new student next year that hasn't gone to charter school, he gets funded as what, 100%?
100%. 100%.
So, you can see that, I'm glad you said that because you can see the kind of the, the trickiness of figuring it out on our end because you've got to know the, the year in which each student has exited, so you can forecast, is it 160 or 40? And then, of that, what are they going to fund? That's a crap.
Right, that's a, that's a mystery until it ends.
Yeah.
So, where we are with our FY21 budgeting, in the beginning of our process, and I, we just, Jason and I discussed this with the towns. You know, one of the reasons that you see variance in the numbers and we go from one spot to a very different spot is because we are trying to be transparent from the very start. So, what we start with is not necessarily what we're going to end up with. So, we had three budgets originally and we had a level services budget, which you can see the amount, and that increase was a 2.5% increase. That meant no implementation of any of the continued initiatives. We weren't going forward with much of Phase Two. The Phase Two budget, fully funded, represented a 3.91% increase and that would give us a full implementation of what we decided to introduce as part of our Phase Two to our overall plan. The working budget, and I'll clarify the drop, so the working budget is actually now at only a 1.79% increase. We got to that number by reallocating funds for different things. Another factor is we recently found out all of the people that are going to intend to retire. So, that allowed us to factor in retirement savings to the, the number that is part of our working budget. And as you'll hear later, we also are proposing that this budget includes a significant, not too significant, it includes the use of EMD to offset the, the cost of our literacy program that we feel is an integral part of what we need to do this upcoming year. Dr. DeFalco will speak to that a little further and we'll further clarify that.
Yeah, and so, just to quickly elaborate, so as Matt was discussing, you know, we did, we did some additional work to that. We looked at what we initially prioritized as what we would need in our Phase Two budget, which is listed here, which was an additional planning, teaching, and learning coach for the elementary level. We wanted to have one specifically for pre-K to two because early grades is a very different type of instruction than it is for grades three, four, and five. So, we removed that. We just left with the one coach we currently have at the elementary level. We took out of the budget the additional high school teacher that we needed to virtually eliminate study halls and add additional ELA, English Language Arts enrichment courses and intervention courses, which is really important because the standards have changed at the high school levels. We've talked about the new state assessment, the bar's been raised immensely. And so, there's definitely a need there and I can talk a little about that if anyone's interested. At the elementary level, we needed to take out two elementary specialists because, and I'm going to take the opportunity to plug our regional agreement here, we do not have equitable opportunities at the elementary school for enrichment classes. One of the schools has more STEM, STEAM, technology courses than the other school. That's a problem. And so, we need to put equity across the board in terms of the STEM, science, technology, engineering courses that our kids can take and the enrichment classes. Rarely will you see schools put, or districts put forward enrichment teachers in a budget, but that's what this was. So, kids have more enrichment opportunities and to level the playing field. But be that as it may, we had to remove that, so we'll continue to push for those equal opportunities a different way. We also, as Matt said, we, we did some reallocation of money based on looking at now who we know is retiring and we could actually substitute in the exiting, retiring employees' salary at a lower rate. And then, what we did was, as Matt mentioned, we looked at one of our biggest priorities, I would say the biggest priority, which was our core literacy program for grades K through 12 across the district. And I won't get into all the details of that, but that is a very significant cost. But we're able to work with the providers of the, of the program we're looking to move forward with and basically pay it in two installments without any interest. So, we're looking to use about 167,000 of our excess and deficiency to pay for that one-time cost for our first installment of our literacy program, K to 12.
I just want to jump in before you turn the slide. I just would like to emphasize, all of these positions that we took out of the Phase Two budget were positions that we were trying to introduce. That certainly, as we will discuss, does not imply that we don't think we need them. And this came about from meeting with the towns and really understanding the limitations of where things were at this point from a financial standpoint. So, we need to move forward with improving the quality of education that occurs in the district, but we understand that we can't do that at too excessive a cost to the towns. If, if the new revenues from the towns can't meet anywhere near what we need, we're not trying to overburden everyone.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. The two elementary specialists, getting back to the regional agreement. If that, if there was a different setup with the classrooms where it was. there was a different setup with the classrooms where it was fully regionalized, would you be looking for two specialists?
That's a great question, and I think what, I think the, probably the best way to answer that would be depend upon how that configuration looked like, but I think it would probably, the Blackstone, Millville, whatever the grade configuration is, all of those kids would have the same.
So there's a potential, I'll say then.
Yep.
Is there a possibility of a potential that you may only need one of those specialists if?
Absolutely. If we were all together.
Figured I'd throw a plug in there as well, so there would be a significant savings as well.
Yep.
There's the potential to also save on other overhead costs.
Yes, I, we didn't get to that point yet.
Yeah.
Fargo, you have a question?
Yeah, just as I was, and maybe I missed it when you said it, but when you finish Phase One and you go into Phase Two, is there any overlap of what you were expecting to spend or have for Phase One that is utilized in Phase Two, or it's like, Phase One's out, Phase Two stops?
No, it's a continuum. It's a continuum. So in Phase One, I think, did we?
We added the two.
Well, the two coaches.
Yep.
But some was reallocation. So those coaches are still here.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is maintaining everything that we did introduce in Phase One, and we're just identifying what pieces of Phase Two we can now add on.
Trying to build it up.
To build it up.
So each phase will.
Build capacity.
Yes.
And I think to Matt's point, I think one of the reasons that, I don't know if I'd go as far to say comfortable, but we're, that we're okay with this model, is because it does maintain Phase One. So that's good, right? So I don't want the parents to normally be worried about that. It does maintain what we put it like, nothing is being cut. And the big piece we're adding is our core literacy program, which we're doing through our excess and efficiency. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this probably, you probably just answered my question, but back to kind of the inequity in the schools, for the elementary school kind of technology programs. You're not adding it to the one, but you're not taking it away from the other.
No, nothing is being removed from anything. Yeah, I don't want people worried about that. We worked very hard to make sure we could preserve exactly what we, this first initial phase of work.
I have a question. As far as, so right now, we're looking at the 21 working number. That's the number you're at right now.
Yes.
Does that number include settled contracts? Is that settled, or?
Yeah, so Unit A, the teachers ratified.
Okay.
Their contract, and the school committee is voting it tomorrow evening. It's on our agenda.
And then, question two.
That's reflected.
Okay, thanks. And question two, since we have more people retiring, was OPEB funded at all, or at an increased level, or is that being discussed?
Yeah, we did discuss it, but we actually, we looked at a few different options. We did not put it in this year's budget for the reasons we mentioned.
When you did your calculations of the reduction of salaries because people were going to retire, did you add back in the additional costs that you're going to have for OPEB for those same people that are retiring?
Well, the OPEB costs are separate. They'll be, they'll be an analysis from the auditors, but there's no, at this point, there is no real operating cost for OPEB.
Well, when you have people retire, okay, and you pick up half their medical expenses, et cetera.
Oh, yes.
There's a cash figure that has to go out.
So their benefits, yeah, all of the benefits for active and future retirees have been factored into this budget. So just. I apologize if I didn't understand your question.
Just on the OPEB, so I hope that you do plan to look at that long and hard as time goes on, because having shared the actuaries report, you know, I see the latest valuation, your liability is 34 million bucks. It's gone up nearly 10 million since the last valuation for a variety of factors. And it goes up a million bucks every year as they project it, so 30 years out, it's 100 and something million. If you do something, if you put away 200 grand, we talked briefly about that, each year, the liability over 30 years grows to 60 million, so 40 million less, so it's a substantial decrease in the growth of the liability. As you sit today in your health benefit costs that are included in this budget, from looking at that actuaries report, 40 percent and growing of the participants receiving health premiums, health benefit premiums, are retired, so they're no longer providing services. So that's one of my favorite topics, as you know. And so I continue, I will continue to encourage you to look at it long and hard and do something more proactive about that, as difficult as it may be to find room in your budgets.
Okay. I think a couple of years ago, we had a commitment from the then superintendent, that when they broke out the health expenses, they were going to do one number for the active people and another for the retired people, so that you could see what the funding for OPEB was going to be. Is that still available, or have you just co-mingled them all back together again?
In this bud, in this budget, the two lines are together. The insurance payments are together. That's how they were when we came, when I came in. So when I came in in FY '19, there were no two separate lines. So they may have mentioned that there was a plan to do that, but there were no, there were no lines that were being used to separate the funds. I can, however, get information on that. We do know how much we pay for our retirees versus how much we pay for our active members, and that is something that I would not be against moving forward, because quite honestly, on the end of the year fiscal report for the Department of Ed, we do have to show those different expenses.
The ship is sinking.
Not this ship, my friend. This ship is rising.
So the towns have an obligation to pay their portions of the OPEB. The towns are well aware that they have not been paying that, I believe since Mr. Watson brought it up several years ago. So moving forward, when you get a plan to start having the towns contribute to OPEB, can we just, we would, I know the Town of Blackstone in the school budget would just put an additional line item, and what of that long term? Look, the Town of Blackstone does a 250,000 every year in the town meeting warrant, but that's an obligation of the towns, which should be separated from the educational costs in its own line item. And it may make it easier for the towns to understand whether it's, I would assume that it's based on the portion, there's approximately 7228.
Yeah, it would be.
It would be, because of, so I, the towns have actually been calling for it. It's their obligation. I think it should be a line item in the budget, going back to the towns. My opinion is one selectmen and one town, so.
So that brings us to our actual current working number, which, as you can see, is There's a further breakdown of that in the summary sheet that you have. So if you take a look, I know last year, the number 24771 was thrown around, and that was our budget number. So this may sound like to go to 26405 is a tremendous increase, but if you, I think you all have this summary sheet, if you take a look, last year when we voted on that number, that really was only the operating portion for the district of our budget. This number, the 26405, which is really how it, I've been told, it would be better to include all of these expenses that should be, it includes the school choice sending tuition, and it includes the charter school sending tuition, which we don't see in our Chapter 70, so it comes out off of the top. But when we did the, when we did the budget last year, I netted out of the Chapter 70, so it looked like the budget was a little lower than it was, and if you actually look in the first column of the summary, you can see the 24771 number, but then you could see the charter school and the school choice money added back in, so that the actual budget last year was close to the 25483. So that gets us to the total budget this year of the 26405,152, which is an overall 1.79 percent increase to our budget. You can also see on the summary sheet, and as I put it in one of the slides, the monies that we have to offset the, the actual budget. In the slide that you're looking at right now, that totals 13,694,463, which includes the use of circuit breaker. On the summary sheet that you have, it's a, it's a bit of a different number, circuit breaker is separate. On this one slide, I put everything together, but on the, on the summary sheet, there's a couple of things in different places, so you have to add a couple of numbers to get to the 13,694. So if we take that money that we're getting from all different revenues, including transportation reimbursement, our charter reimbursements, also funds that are raised by the district by collecting fees, that brings us to the remainder, which is 13,208,963, and that's the money that gets split between the towns. That is the, the money that gets split for the appropriation. And if you look, there's a summary of your assessments. This is just the FY '21 assessments, and then I'll allow you guys to take a look at all of the variances between the towns. So if you look at the Blackstone assessment, we have the minimum local contribution, the exclusionary, which is only transportation costs. That's arrived at by taking our total transportation costs for the district, subtracting the amount that we're going to get for the transportation reimbursement, and then splitting the remainder between the percentages of the different, of the two towns. And then you can see each town's capital costs and the additional, which is just that, which is above the minimum local contribution. That gets Blackstone to a total of 9,845,306, and that is a 3.49 percent increase over last year's total assessment, capital included. And Millville, you can run through the same numbers, which gets them to a total of 3, 334,645, which is an increase of 1.36 percent over last year's total assessment.
The only portion of this that the town has options on is the additional contribution? Is that still the case?
That is the case.
If I may.
Yes.
And it was pointed out earlier, because I know we're going to hear it in Blackstone, I'm sure from the finance committee, was, is, Millville's increase is only 1.36, and Blackstone's is 3.49. Again, those, those lines, exclusionary costs and additional cap contribution are the only two at that percentage of approximately 7228. The minimum local contribution, set by the state, and the capital, the capital costs and capital projects are, for the high school and this school, is shared at the same percentage. And then Millville may have its own capital costs at the elementary school over there, and Blackstone has its own capital cost.
They do.
So when they look at the capital costs, it's not going to appear to be the 7228. That's what.
No, the capital costs, definitely. And I actually just shared with, I don't know her new name, Lauren Zahorsky.
Lauren.
But I know her last name.
Lauren Taylor.
Lauren Taylor.
Yeah.
Congratulations that she was recently married. I just shared the capital assessment spreadsheet that I use with her, so that she has that for record in Blackstone, what the actual parts of the capital assessment are. And I can do the same thing for Millville.
Do the capital assessments include the recently approved project for Millville?
Yes. So this, so there is one bond that we currently have, that we, that we just entered into this year, and all that will be required to be paid on it next year is some interest. And that was a $2 million, that was a $2 million bond that we took out, and we, we combined the two projects, but proportionately, we split the amount of the interest that needs to be paid. And that is on the assessment sheet that I sent to the towns.
So when does the actual capital payment begin? Is it after the projects are done?
Project has to be closed, audited, and then we would finalize all of the financing, what we need to turn it into a longer term borrowing plan.
Okay. And then I guess the other question is, from an exclusionary cost, both, it doesn't look like the funding increased that much for regional transportation, but why is it going down so much? Was it like a newly negotiated contract for transportation?
No, so that, so when I put in the, when I put in the end of the year financial report, I actually found that in the past, I don't want to stir stuff up, you know, there's the two mile, there's the two mile exclusion, that we, there's eligible riders and ineligible riders. And eligible riders are those that are outside of the two mile radius of the school, and ineligible riders are within the two mile radius. There were some additional factors, like the lengths of the driveways, like Millville's that is approximately, oh, Millville's isn't as bad, I should say this driveway, which is almost half a mile, and that's.
You sent Matt up with a ruler, basically.
Yeah.
To measure the distances.
We really did actually walk the distance on all of the driveways to the door to see, and those were added. And we got a significantly increased reimbursement for our transportation this year, whereas we had anticipated in the 500 something range, we anticipate over $600,000 in reimbursement for this upcoming year.
Those reflect that here.
Okay.
That's why there's that decrease.
Okay.
The 167 for the E and D, is that, you said that's two payments?
Will be two payments, yeah. So we're going to pay, so the total cost for the literacy program, which is, which is very much needed, K to 12 is approximately 340-ish, 320, somewhere in that range, I don't have the exact number, but it was somewhere in that, 320 to 340. So we took that, we talked to both of the, to the vendors we're working with, and they agreed to let us pay it in two installments, because the actual agreement with them is a six-year agreement. So although we're paid in two years, we have the program firmly in place with all the materials, resources, and everything we need for six years. So it works out pretty well.
Okay. And we took that out of the E and D, because in addition to the six-year period, a lot of that is their durables. So the consumable cost to start replacing some of those books is not going to be significant. We would never take any long running operating cost out of E and D. So this is more, we're looking at it as a one-time durable purchase for the curriculum. And actually, for the information, just FYI, the E and D was just recently certified at approximately $750,000, so we're comfortable with the amounts that we're tapping into. So we have not only this budgeted for next year, but you'll hear at tomorrow's meeting, we're going to be trying to, again, authorize the use of E and D for the safety vestibule at the high school and the capital planning project that we currently have going on across the district. So the next two pages, we don't need to spend a ton of time on, but this is the breakout for each of the towns' assessment, and a comparison to the FY, from the FY '20 to the FY '21, in each of the actual assessment areas.
Yep. Just showed you the side by side.
Yep, we showed you the, the total was side by side.
And so as we kind of, oh, I'm sorry, is there a question? No? Okay.
Oh, I apologize. I should have pointed out, there is one mistake in Millville's, which has a positive 1.66. I believe it's actually, it is corrected on the slideshow for the public. It is a negative 1.57. So I apologize.
We corrected it for the, but these are already, had gone to print, so.
This was, this was at the point where we were literally changing $5,000 here and $10,000 here, so this slide got changed within the matter of about two hours, maybe four or five times. So I do apologize.
That was my fault.
That was the, that was the point of the pencil, when we were really getting down to it.
So as we kind of move into the home stretch here, we just want to talk a little bit about what it, so what's in the budget? So folks have a sense of, well, if we didn't get the Phase Two items that we were hoping for, what is in there? And so the first item is really that focus on continued instructional services. And we have very specific. And we have very specific work happening in the area of instruction and learning, teaching and learning that's going on between our coaching, between the actual professional development and the capacity building of our teachers, of our teacher leaders, of our principals. That remains a, other than safety, one of our huge focus areas, to continue to advance our students' learning forward. We have also in there, as you know, one of our main commitments, the first part of our strategy is focus on curriculum. So we left in full, fully intact our curriculum revision cycle. Mathematics is up for next year. So we have our review and revision budget line in there, so we can take a very deep look at math. Not saying we'll change it, we don't know, but we're going to have a very deep look that will happen there. And I should just give a real quick shout-out to our literacy committee, that is comprised of leaders and teachers K through twelve. We were just, BMR was just written up in a national publication for our process that we used. It's really cool to see, because there's a nice map of Massachusetts, a little star where BMR is, and a little overview of the district, and a headline for me that says, you know, "Kids Can't Wait for Good Instruction," which I, which we all firmly believe. And so we use the process that was just anchored in research. What does the research tell us about what makes a high-impact literacy program? And what does the research say about existing high-impact literacy programs that are being used now to help narrow the achievement gaps for kids? So, just really cool that BMR was put in the national publication for our work in that area. Good testament to our, to our team. And so we're going to be using a-
You need to get that out, like, all over the place to the community. That's a very important strategic move. Local paper, anything, put it in there.
That's a great idea.
That's really a plus.
We've thrown it out on social media a lot, but I don't, again, I don't know who-
Yeah, but a lot of people don't do social media.
Sure, yeah, I don't know how, yeah.
And local paper, like the Enlightener, would do well, doing that on, that's a great highlight.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Something like that, that would be a wonderful.
Thank you for that.
Back to the math curriculum piece, though, were your intentions initially in Phase Two to actually replace the math curriculum, and now it's kind of a longer process? Or that was always the plan, was to do the review this year?
Always the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's because we have a set multi-year plan, so we did science, literacy, extra math, P P programs.
Okay.
Also, in our, in the twenty, the twenty-six-point-four-million-dollar budget that we discussed, we are expanding our one-to-one initiative down into the elementary level, which is really great. So our elementary classrooms, down to second grade, I'm sorry, third grade, will be one-to-one, so the kids will have all their own Chromebooks in class. And then in our primary grades, we have Chromebook stations for our kindergarteners, and we have a shared Chromebook cart for every two classrooms, at first and second grade. And that is because, as you can imagine, with all of the new curriculum work that we're doing, the technology component is just awesome. I mean, the opportunities that kids have is pretty amazing. And so what's not on here is also our STEM Scopes Science Program at the elementary level, which is a lab-based, tech-based science platform, which is really awesome. We were able to implement it this year. Took us a little longer. Remember, last year, as Jane just said, we actually did our science revision, but we took, we took an extra six months to really study and research and make sure we were going with the right model. And so we also have our new STEM Scopes program at the elementary level. So it's really awesome. So next year, the kids will have, you know, a true full year with our new science program, the new literacy program, we're going to be studying our existing math program, we're one-to-one from twelfth grade all the way down to third grade with shared devices in grades one and stations set up for kindergarten. So we're just doing some amazing work with everybody's support in this area. What we want to see in FY twenty-two, because you know that that's how we think, is always looking forward, you'll see a lot of these items come back up. We may or may not move forward with a new math curriculum, we're not sure. You know, we've got to really study our results and look to see what the latest research is around, around existing math models for kids that are reaping a lot of benefits in terms of the achievement gaps. We'd like to see additional planning, teaching, and learning coach in place. So again, that specialization, a pre-K to two, and then one for three to five, because the instruction really is pretty different. We would like to have that high school teacher in place. Just to give everybody a sense, under the old MCAS exam, we were, so under the old exam, last year's results, so last spring, spring of nineteen, we were at ninety-nine percent of our kids proficient or advanced. Okay? On the new exam, so they shifted all of the ratings and all of the cut scores, we were at fifty-six percent of our kids meeting or exceeding expectations. They just, they moved the, they moved the goalpost. So that's okay. We have to, now we got to pick back up, and we have to start moving back towards, we only had one student that didn't pass the exam, just one, which is amazing. They shifted the results, we had seven kids. So, you know, the goalpost has moved, and we're going to continue to elevate our game to make sure that we're challenging our suits as much as we can.
It's exciting to see you talk about that last slide, and then this one as well. So on this one, would this be different if you knew that the regional agreement modifications were actually in place? Would you think differently about what you're planning?
That's a great question. So I think for us, all of the planning we've done with the regional agreement, I'm really glad you asked it, because all the planning we've done with the regional agreement has been about language and putting a process in place to come up with whatever that design will look like. We have done zero work on the design itself, because the language, quite honestly, doesn't allow for us to do that yet. So I don't, you know, I don't have a good answer to that, because we don't have the language we need yet to start the planning. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, it, I may not know the answer to this, but say, every passes, the regional agreement passes both communities, there will be forums like this.
Oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean? So the public knows, there'll be forums like this with selectmen, finance committee members, as well as the public, from both communities, together in this stadium.
And they would start almost immediately.
Yes.
They'd have to, to be frank.
Yes, if you wanted to get it in for the following September.
That's right.
Right.
Yep. So we would need those-
Sorry.
-early and often.
Actually, if they want, it wouldn't even activate until not the September of twenty-one. It would, early as possible would be September of twenty-two.
FY twenty-two, you mean?
FY twenty-two.
Yes, school year twenty-one.
Yeah, school year twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah. So we'd look to see those elementary positions back, and then obviously, a facilities upgrade. We, as you know, we have a very robust capital plan review going on right now, which I know is important to both communities, equally as important, obviously, to us. And so we are excited and hopeful that the capital plan report will kind of dovetail with what we hope will be some planning for what might look like the next evolution of BMR, in terms of its real estate at schools, and how we want to organize the instructional program for those equal opportunities, equitable opportunities, so. But we know we're going to need facilities upgrades as we continue through that. And then the last two slides, I really bought our strengths and focus on this piece, and I don't want to sit and read all these things to you, just some things I really want to highlight, and I do want to get into this a little bit. If you remember, I sat here a year ago and talked to you about, at third grade, which is a very important grade for measuring literacy results, we were at forty-three percent of our students at grade level, and we use the expression, "Eight's too late." We've got to get the kids at grade level by third grade. Last year, spring of nineteen, with only, you know, little less than a year of doing the work, the way we've been doing it, and the focus on it, teaching and learning, the way we've been focusing on it, that moved from forty-three to fifty-three. So we saw a ten percent increase in a year. That is a huge celebration and a testament to our teachers for the work that they're doing, and the way that they're approaching their planning, teaching, and learning. Also, at the high school, and I'll talk about how we did it, I remember very clearly, the table configuration was over there, and it was just when the graduation numbers came out, our high school is at an eighty-seven percent graduation rate and a two-point-two percent dropout rate. Through some very intentional and strategic work at the high school, with our high school team, that graduation rate in a year moved to ninety, just over ninety-three percent. The dropout rate moved from two-point-two to point-five. And that was through monthly meetings, we call them student accountability meetings, where we go kid by kid by kid, looking at their challenges, their successes, and we set up individual case management plans. This year, we've added to that an outside contract through a grant with a health services provider that is coming into the building to work with our guidance staff, and that provides one-to-one counseling for students, to really help, again, minimize those non-academic barriers, so that quite frankly, the kids can learn, and we can get them to graduate on time. And so we're really excited about that work. The administration, teachers, and guidance staff worked really hard to move that needle as aggressively as they did, and I'll tell you, it boils down to some administrators going and getting kids out of bed in the morning. Others buying alarm clocks and teaching the kids how to, right? And from our perspective, we don't judge anybody. We love our kids, we give them whatever they need, right? So we make sure that our kids are here and that they're ready to learn. And I will say, it's important for our community to really put their arms around this and embrace it. The past decade, our free and reduced lunch numbers went from fifteen percent to just under forty. And I'm going to send a fairly pointed message to our communities tonight, that number's not going to change anytime soon in terms of those numbers decreasing. And so it's not a judgment, it's just the position we have to take, and we've got to continue to put the needs of our kids first, and figure out how to accelerate those high flyers, and support the kids at the bottom twenty-five percent, elevate them, and challenge all the kids in between. And so that we remain committed to. So there's a lot of really good work going on. I just mentioned some of our focus areas moving forward. The last bullet, I just want to draw everyone's attention to, because I think this is probably the most significant shift the community's going to feel. I hope they already have. I know Senator Fatman mentioned it last night. We are doing an amazing amount of work around developing career pathways for our secondary students. We wrote a seventy-thousand-dollar grant, and it was awarded for our high school. We are implementing next year, for the first time, a biomedical pathway, so kids can take four years of biomedicine and graduate with a ton of coursework and experience and internships in that pathway. They will have an opportunity next year through the Superintendent Consortium in Blackstone Valley to take Advanced Manufacturing One, Two, and Three, Computer Science, Cybersecurity. Our kids have never had those options that they have now. So we are opening up our doors through this consortium concept and portfolio concept, so kids can come and take courses with us, and we can send our kids out to take courses in other districts. We have five students now that will, at the end of this year, freshmen, will have completed Advanced Manufacturing One and Two through a Tuesday evening and Saturday program blended learning model that we created as a superintendent consortium. And that was what Senator Fatman was talking about. We co-authored a grant to put forward for requests of over a hundred thousand dollars in additional resources to expand this program for kids. We also wrote a hundred-thousand-dollar grant to back these pathways into the middle school, with a focus on artificial intelligence, computer science. We were really excited to learn, we've been moved to the second phase. They will be actually conducting a follow-up interview and meeting with the team, and we're looking at things like kids programming Alexas, the little Amazon things, to building artificial intelligence arms and programming those to collect different data and respond to that data. This, right here, guys, right, BMR, right in this building, and then expose them to the additional pathways we have at the high school. And all of this has been done through grants.
That is wonderful.
So I just want to give a shout-out to our middle school and high school staff, because they are working around the clock on this stuff, to make sure we get this in place for kids.
So, that brings us to where we are. As mentioned, we have our twenty-six million, four-hundred-and-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two-dollar working budget. We are hoping to move this forward, as we hope that everyone in both towns sees, we have gotten to the place where we can get. We've really sharpened the pencil, we've really gone over everything that we could make adjustments to, and we're hoping that this number will be supported. Our next steps, we have the Town of Millville Finance Subcommittee on the eighteenth, we have the Town of Blackstone Finance Subcommittee Meeting on the twenty-fourth, and the hope is, after a public hearing tomorrow at the school committee meeting, that on March twenty-sixth, we will be able to certify this budget.
So just one question, going back to OPEB. If the towns were to, like, support putting money into OPEB, would that be, basically, if it was to support an increase in the budget to put money into OPEB, would the school be required to put that money into OPEB, or be able to discretionarily use it just as an increase to their budget?
So, so, so the school committees or school committees have the ability to create reserves specifically for E and D, capital, and the OPEB, and special education, special education one as well. So we would, we would have to, as a school committee, set up that account, if you will, or reserve, if you will, I don't know, I'm not using the financial lingo, but-
It's a line item.
Line item, specifically for that. And then that's all that it could be used for.
You can't pilfer it.
You can't, no, you can't.
Well, no, I guess I was just thinking it was more like contributions to a state fund or something, but you're talking about just funding a reserve that is able to fund the OPEB.
That's essentially what you have to do.
Yeah.
Have you created a trust fund, an OPEB trust fund? You probably have not.
We've not yet, because we haven't had the startup.
Understood.
So, kind of what I was alluding to earlier, so you think next year, you may have something set up where there'd be a different line item for the towns, for the next year's budget for OPEB, or would the school entertain doing something like that, seeing that the towns are interested in catching up on that liability?
We can certainly, you know, we really have to take your direction at that, because we, you know, we, we have in the past tried to do, you know, in the past, we haven't even gotten the need funded. Yeah.
So.
And so to add an additional expense on top of that, it just, it hasn't been feasible. But if you're saying that it's, and I know it's necessary, it hasn't been feasible. And so if you're saying to us, you know, based on the ask that's coming forward, we can meet your need, and feasibly, perhaps additional more, then there's not a school committee member who's going to say, you don't want to do that.
I would be worried that, then if we go back to the slide about what we're hoping to see in FY twenty-two, if it's going to come at the expense of these needs that we've already postponed for this year, then it becomes an issue.
So I guess the point I was making is, the towns both recognize, this isn't often, I don't believe this happens often, right?
Right, I think we're all-
So, yeah.
Change the agenda, of course.
Right, right. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting for this year, because the district needs to come up with a plan on, on what it, so, so understand, I guess, and I'm speaking, I think, for Blackstone, I think Millville, the towns understand there's a minimum contribution that we're obligated to by the state. The towns, I believe, at this time, understand there's a contribution we have to make to OPEB. So that's why I'm suggesting, suggesting it's an additional own-line item-
Yeah.
-that is exclusively for OPEB, for both towns, which we, we realize is not part of the educational budget of the students, you know what I mean? Similar to capital projects and, and, you know, exclusionary, there are obligations of the towns at, per our agreement, and they are obliga, they are obligations. We, I think we're recognizing, we don't want to get caught up down the road.
Thirty-four billion dollars.
Yeah, down the road, and so we're looking for, to work with you, I believe, and I think on a plan moving forward. I'm not suggesting this year, but I think we are prepared for next year, you know. Does that make sense, that, is that where we're getting at?
You put twenty dollars in it or something.
No.
People create a fund without money in it. We've created capital expenditure funds in Millville before they were funded, I mean-
Someone must have checking accounts like that.
Right, you just-
Mr. Watson.
OPEB is really a part of your personnel costs, okay? And the people that are working now, okay, and have retirement benefits in their contracts to go out until they die, hopefully a long time from now, you should really, my suggestion in past years, is that part of their compensation is a contribution into the OPEB reserve, which is really for their benefit. And that should be what it is going forward, and that way, it gets into the basic budget, and means that you are funding your actual expenses instead of deferring a portion- a portion of them out to infinity and until the amount of money that you owe gets so big on the current expense. The reason you're paying 14% of your budget is that none of it is coming out of past year's appropriations for the actual work that people did.
So, work on a line item for next year? Does that sound like a plan?
I'll give you the 20. I started off with a bang.
This doesn't often happen when we're all in an agreement.
Well, the way you go about it, we can discuss.
Yeah, right, right.
I think we, I think the idea is a commitment, and I would commit to assist in the thought process of how you best go after this sort of thing, because, you know, to me, it's very important. And, you know, you think about what you want to include in your curriculum for your kids. Well, those are the kids that are going to be stuck with the bill-
Right.
-if we all don't take care of it sooner than later. So, you know, so, it's good to hear that, and we're mostly on the same page.
We are, we're always on the same-
I think it's, it's very important, especially with the new agreement coming up. There may be questions around it. How are we going to handle these things? So, just a very important point to have planned for.
I'll also say, you've really done an outstanding job of sharpening your pencils. I know it was a major effort on all of your part. So, I'm really, I'm actually surprised, having dealt with regional school budgets elsewhere. You committed, you did it, did a great job. Well done.
And if I may, with, as far as Blackstone's end, the total minimum contribution increase in Blackstone, I'm sorry, the total overall BMR budget in Blackstone with these numbers is $331,909. The total minimum contribution required by the state is $323,724. So, it's a net increase of, I mean, of $8,185, okay? So, we have, we have been mandated by the state for an additional 323, and overall is a 331. With Millville, it's mandated by the state is $110,215, and their total increase over last year is $44,626. So, overall, this is one of the, I, more positive, there's no anticipated changes, right?
Yeah.
Not until the next set of government numbers come out. No, we keep, this is-
Ask us tomorrow after the public has a chance.
That would be after this is all said and done anyway. So, these appropriations are what the appropriations will be going out as.
That's why we wanted to outline a lot of the educational pieces, so everybody could see that, like that, because that's not changing. Like, that's what we're looking to do. And this is the fiscal plan. We have a place to do that. So.
And if I could just ask one more thing, when you present the budget at the town meeting or, yeah, the, whatever they have, a-
Public hearing.
Public hearing. I think it's very important, because I really tuned in on that last night. I think a lot of people don't realize it, as we put, where the split actually happens is not all these numbers.
Correct.
Somehow, those have to be highlighted. These are the only ones that are affected by that. It's not your entire budget. Blackstone's not taking over 70-something percent, of the whole budget. It's not the whole budget. It's just these couple of line items. And that's very significant, because I think people really get into the whole, they look at the bottom-line number and they go, "Oh, my gosh," you know? And it's not that way.
Could I ask the, the, I'll say 72-28 split, is that on total eligible students in the district or total actual students in the district from each town?
Isn't it students that we're teaching?
It's students that are here.
Yeah. It's on students that are enrolled in the district.
In the seats.
Okay. Because either town could have a concern with that, because if more students, for an example, if more students are choicing out of a neighboring town, that increases, which the towns don't have control over, that increases the percentage of the other town.
Yeah.
So.
But it is what it is.
I think we should look at eligible-
Similarly, the out-of-district costs for students with special needs is, it's just split.
Split.
And we don't, we don't get into where those costs-
And that's not necessarily a choice, unfortunately, you know, anyway. But if students are choicing out in more in Blackstone and we have less Blackstone students, I'm going to reverse this, right? More students, that would increase Millville's-
Contribution.
Contribution and vice versa. How do you like how I did that?
The denominator.
How do you like how I did that, huh?
I liked that.
So, that's, that was just a thought, and that's, especially if there's mass exit from one town or the other. Hopefully, we're working to reverse that, but-
The way, the way I try to view that, not saying that that is the, is a wrong way to look at it, because you can look at it in a few ways. The school choice money comes out prior to us getting our Chapter 70 money, and so does, so does the charter school money. So, choice comes off the top of Chapter 70, charter comes off the top of Chapter 70, and then, when we do these assessments, we assume, okay, we're getting what we're getting for Chapter 70 reimbursement. Our budget is what it is. Then, we split it across the kids that are, that are here. Yeah.
Additional contribution. Again, you have 100 kids out from Blackstone, so they're not counted into the population, and 20 kids chanced out from Millville. That increases, you know, I'm curious of, because Blackstone went, went up to this, and I think this is right. So, we, we went from 72 and change percentage, we're up to 74.07, and Millville has gone from 27-something down to 25.93. So, it doesn't sound like big percentages, but it could be big dollars. You know what I mean? And just all about fair and equitable across the board, so we continue to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
Continue.
Continue. That's right, continue. Yep. You know, we, we can do it.
Anyone else?
We already do.
I've been making comments at various forums about the 45-day addition to the budget, okay, and the condition. I think I found what the problem is, okay, is that when you wrote up the change to the regional agreement, you've left one provision, one clause out of it, and that is the 45-day exception, its approval, okay, is only if the town's contribution stays the same or goes down. Kind of counterintuitive, okay? But if you, the school district gets in an extra $100,000 from a budget thing or a grant or something, you can increase the budget, okay, by $100,000 and spend the money, and you don't have to get the individual towns to actually take action. The same thing is if you take the money out of your reserves and spend that, the E and D money. You don't necessarily have to get the towns, it's a school committee thing to do it with their own money. The only thing I would ask is that you take a look at what the state law says. It's about 10 words long. Stick it into the, the charter amendment, okay? And because the way it reads right now creates a great deal of problems for the finance committees, because it reads as if the budget goes up, you increase the budget afterwards, okay? And the town has already set the tax rate. How the devil do you raise the additional money? When you put the clause in there, takes it away.
So, to Mr. Watson's point, I've done a lot of research today, and there are, it's a, there is an A, B, C, D component, and the Department of Ed has said that their lawyers are looking at the way we worded it versus the way it is worded in the state law, and they will get us the feedback of the way it should actually be worded, because there is an A, B, C, D, and we just put a-
It's in there. You just don't have it broken out?
Essentially.
Yes.
Correctly.
Because it is-
Correct.
It is all the statute.
It is correct.
It's all mass general law.
It is correct.
We're very clear on that.
And it is the law, and it is the statute, and it is the standard.
What we've been practicing for 50 years.
Since day one.
Okay, so, I'm going to follow up on last night, and now that we're talking about regional agreement. The Board of Selectmen in Blackstone just had one concern through its legal counsel, was the lease issue that was five-year statute. We, as you guys probably know, we, that was clarified today. So, as far as the Board of Selectmen's concerned, we're good to go on that, and we have called for a special town meeting on it on April 28th. So, so, we're ready, and we're going to, we're going to act before Millville. How's that? And it's a positive thing.
You're happy.
You asked, and-
Sounds competitive.
That sometimes.
Not for a lack of trying.
It's friendly competition.
That's right.
It's friendly.
Anything else?
The, 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 grow down the capital debt, that's the whole thing we're trying to hash out.
We'll take you over to town meeting.
It's all good.
Just show up.
I think we saw, I think we did. I hope we did. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
We don't have any others scheduled for the year, so, unless somebody has a need for us to gather again, see you in the fall.
In the fall.